Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular monthly meeting for the month of April. At this time, if anyone will please rise for our invocations, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
My gracious Father, we come to you this evening, Lord. We thank you for a beautiful day that you've given to us. We ask God that you would continue blessing our town, blessing our community. We ask that you would lead us, guide us, and direct us in all things. In Jesus' name we pray.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ted, is there any business from council members that they need to add to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, under any business, I mean, the banners, the street banners.
Another item, we probably do another new business, have to scout with Kevin. We need, before we leave tonight, we need to set a budget workshop meeting sometime this month, so, Scott, if you can help us remember that, please.
Sure.
We'll do that other new business. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Sir, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say ahsa. We have received our minutes from the, excuse me, the March regular council meeting, as well as the reconvene meeting in March. Hope we once had a chance to review those minutes. Are there any editing or additions or revisions that need to be made to the minutes? Hearing that, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for both those meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second for a discussion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aha.
Opposed, say ahsa. We're now down to approval of a march accounts payable, capital assets. It's here for our finance committee, Mr. Kellerman.
Council, I've provided an additional document to be added to this month's accounts payable. Mayor had a couple notes for Diane, a note for Beverly.
Okay.
The Davis Brother Nursery, the landscaping, that needs to be brought down, or part of that needs to go to be done for maintenance. Also, there was a drawdown from Cudon Plateau. Need to make sure that that is drawn down, downtown revitalization funds. And also, adjourned them to management group. That's from the grant that we have. Mayor, Kevin, council don't have any further additions or comments on notes to approve for the march accounts payable.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say ahsa. As advertised in the local paper, at this time, I'm going to declare us in a joint session with our planning commission. Around five o'clock this afternoon, Chairman, Mr. Rainey Kyle, and he has had a family emergency involving his father, so he's unable to be here tonight. So Kevin, you'll need to get this, start this process, I'll turn it over to you, okay? So, since I warned you, I'll turn it over to you. I'm turning it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask, since Diane, she don't care, to go ahead and read the application.
An application was submitted by Land and Tech Development LLC for conditional use permit to place a trailer on the property that is located at 470 East Main Street in a R2 general dwelling district. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
All right. Is there someone here to represent this conditional use permit?
Someone, yeah.
Okay.
Phil Turplin, I represent Land and Tech Development. I represent Land and Tech Development as an agent for them. They were approached about a month or so ago by Goodwill Industries. They're looking for a location, just a place of a collections site, a mobile adult collection site, not a permanent building. They feel that the area of Russell County has been one that has been very loyal to serving, providing collection items to Richlands and Abidin, but they feel that serving Russell County might be of benefit as well. So, we have Teddy Gaines here from Goodwill who can answer questions, and he'll explain, and he has a picture, as to what they're looking at doing. But it will just be a mobile site, it's not built in trailers, not a fixed building of any nature. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but perhaps Mr. Gaines might be able to provide more information.
What type of trailer is he talking about? Tractor trailer or?
Yeah, why don't we let Teddy Gaines answer that for you? He actually has a picture. They're gonna, well, let you talk, I can answer. Let Teddy answer.
Hello, thanks for having me. I represent Goodwill of Geneva. We are stationed and located in Kingsport, Tennessee. Our area stretches all the way up to Richlands, Virginia. We have a store in Richlands, Virginia, and also in Abidin. To answer your question, I would like to place this 20-foot box truck on the property to collect donations here in Lebanon. We will hire two Lebanon attendants for this attended donation center, which we call it. These donations will serve our Richmond store and our Abidin store. I'll have a driver who will drive the box truck up to Richlands and also down to Lebanon, excuse me, Abidin, drop the product off, and he come back before our donation hours to continue to collect donations. I have seven attended donation centers in our territory in Tennessee. Also have a few donation trailers. This is a 48-foot trailer that is in Johnson City, Tennessee. And this is also a 24-foot box truck that is located in Jonesboro, Tennessee. All of these donation centers service our stores. As y'all probably know, Kingsport to Richlands is a little ways. My title is Director of Logistics. I'm just trying to find a more efficient way, a more logical way, to support our Richmond store and our Abidin store. We're good neighbors. Honestly, you know, we collect donations. We all want our donations to come during our hours of operation. We'll keep the area clean, we'll support the community, and do anything need be. Honestly, this is a temporary basis as of right now. Hopefully, we can pick up at least 20 donations a day, and hopefully, maybe 6,000 donations for the year. Again, to help support our Richmond store and our Abidin store. As of right now, with this 20-foot box truck right here.
Can we see that?
Yes, sir.
What will be here? You got a little confused here all of a sudden. Does the application say a mobile home?
That will be considered a mobile ABC, because we can put it on the road and take product up to our stores. Our trailers often are more stationary. They are often hooked up to a cab, which takes the donations to our stores, get processed and sold, and they could start to process all over again. Put out a couple of fillers for some employment here in Lebanon. Got a couple hits. Our plan is to hopefully hire two Lebanon individuals to attend the donation center.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be on the asphalt part of that property, or is it gonna be down on the back?
It's gonna be on that asphalt for part of the property.
On the road.
Yes, sir. I'd like to be seen. Honestly, our plan is to put some fencing around to make it a little more safe for our tenants and our donors. We'll keep the place clean. I heard that's a good traffic area. We have software with Goodwill that says Lebanon is a very attractive donation spot, and I'd like to tap this area if possible.
Or you can put plan on doing anything on the lower lot?
As of right now, yes, sir.
But does this stay overnight when you move here today?
It will stay, it will stay overnight once it is full. Our hours of operation are from Saturday, excuse me, Monday to Saturday, from 10:00 to 5:00, and on Sunday, from 1:00 to 6:00. If it is full, we would like to, and that's how we've been doing it down in Kingsport, maybe my attendant gets here around 8:00, gets up to Richlands or down to Abidin, and get back with an empty truck before our hours of operations start and continue to collect donations.
My concern is, I live down on Fields Avenue. With that truck sitting up there, and you've got people coming in, dropping off product, you can't see to come out of Fields Avenue and get on Main Street. That's an obstruction of view to get off of that street. People come in right now up at the realtor's place, and sometimes they'll park out and you can't see. And if you're down there with your truck, and your employees park in cars, we can't see to get out of Fields Avenue. That's not a good location to put this. Being a resident there, I don't, I'm not for this at all. I'm not against what you're doing, but I'm not for it right there at all.
Understood.
Where's your Abidin location?
Abidin store.
Food can?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. North Gate Shopping Center.
Now, I've donated to that, and if you drive around back, it can be a little overwhelming with material donated items. How do we know that our main street won't look like that? You're busy times.
I'll have plenty of signage. Please donate during our hours of operations. That's what most of my donation centers have. And my attendant will be tasked. There may be some donors. My attendant will be tasked as soon as he gets there, clean the place up, and let's continue to work. We'll try our best, honestly, to be a good neighbor and keep the location clean, but I understand.
Yeah, I mean, last time I was over there, it was like maybe 25 trash bags for clothes, maybe, that was outside in the exterior of the building, plus appliances.
That shouldn't happen.
There was only one, but...
That shouldn't happen, and it's unacceptable. Our tenants are trained right now.
I have a suggestion possibly, I don't know whether this would, would you say or not. What if you would put signage on that fence, but park the truck back on the lower lot? People could drive back there, it would be safe down the way. We hadn't discussed this, so...
Sure. I plan on putting signage on the fence.
Just assign a donation center or something like that would be on the truck. Lower lot, this thing.
That's definitely possible.
Park the truck back behind. Land and Tech Development, we're not doing this to make any money, obviously.
We're leaders, Ted.
Yeah, we pay them enough just to pay the taxes on it, but that's about it.
And I don't want to be in the way of traffic, but I, we definitely like to be seen.
I mean, I guess that's an option, if you ask them to go back.
What are your plans for clothes or something that is set off, and a rainstorm comes in the night before you get back? Where people do not follow the directions?
We'll look to, every donation that we collect has a purpose. Either it'll be sold, and if we cannot sell it, it'll go to our salvage operation. So a lot of clothing that is dumped, wet, torn, things of that nature that can't be sold, it is sorted, graded, and like I said, if it can't be sold, maybe some of that nature will be shipped back down to our warehouse in Kingsport, Tennessee, to be sold in our salvage by the end.
It will not be left on the lot?
Oh, no, sir.
No, no, no.
So, your clothes from Saturday, what time until Monday?
Our hours of operation, Saturday, Monday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Yeah. Well, I have three concerns. One, obviously, is the traffic. Anytime somebody parks, I'm the realtor, that parks there, you have a really hard time getting out, and I have a lot of older clients that come, and that's just car wrecks waiting to happen. I really believe that. I think having that big, that truck there, and also, when you're coming down, you know, it kind of buries us because you're not beyond the setback, you're right up front against the road, I've got a problem with that. And all that time that nobody's there, I mean, Russell County, all of our convenience centers are under lock and key for a reason. I mean, people would throw their stuff, I can tell you the whole story. But there's gonna be a lot of stuff there, like this gentleman said, it's gonna rain, it's gonna blow, and it's gonna be all over the place. And I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your wanting to keep it clean, I do, but I also know how this county works. I see they don't burn school all the time. I saw it in Abidin. I see it everywhere. And they're gonna, on the way to work before you get there, they're gonna throw that bag out, and on the way home after you leave, they're gonna throw those bags out. And then my third reason is, we have five other places in town where people can drop stuff off. I don't know that we really need you right smack dab on Main Street in a very dangerous precarious spot. I like you, I've given you a ton of stuff over the years, I got no problem with you all, but I just don't think that's the spot.
I don't have no problem at all moving it down to the lower area.
Well, I mean, that would suit me better, but then what about all the people that have to look at it down below? That doesn't really, you're not, you're not fixing the problem, I don't think.
Like she's saying, with the people dropping off after your people leave till the next morning, then you're gonna have other people coming in here tearing these bags open to see if they can find something in there that they want. And then that stuff's gonna be all down in our yards and everywhere else.
Well, my porch and this yard, we just don't want it.
They don't have a lot, I'm not going.
If it happens once, it's too many times.
Understood. Understood. Okay.
Is that it?
That's all I had to say, yeah.
All right, you guys have any other questions?
Let me ask Tim a question. Tim, you're the vice chair for that.
Yes.
I should, you wanna take it over from here?
No, he's doing a fine job.
We appreciate the application and answering the questions that we'll ask. At this time, I'll turn it back over to the planning commission for their...
Thank you.
All right, before we go further, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say that may be in opposition of the conditional use permit?
I'd like to say one thing. I work in volunteer at the Elk Barn Community, and we have a big sign, "Not Taking Donations." They will drive up with a donation. So just having a sign, if people've got it in their car, they're gonna set it out. You know, and most, I love a Goodwill, I go to them all, a lot of states, and they're just messy. It's just a messy business, and they all have big dumpsters sitting out there. And you know why? Because of just dealing with other people's, what they think is valuable, is necessarily valuable to everybody. So, it's just a messy place.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain to see if there'd be a motion.
I'd like to abstain in this case.
All right. Mayor, at this point, with no motion, this has been denied, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Planning commission took my way, no motion on this, excuse me, this application. Therefore, the application fails at this time. I appreciate everyone's comments, I appreciate your positive being here. I too, I'm gonna involve Goodwill myself here on our way to Abidin. It's not that we're against trying to help Goodwill. This is just not the best, as you've heard, it's not the best location for it. We've got traffic, sight distance issues there, plus concerns, as you've heard, about folks leaving things even after hours, and what might happen to them after that. So, with that said, I'll close the joint meeting of council and planning commission. Now, Mr. Vice Chairman, do you have any recommendation to council?
Yes, sir. Here's that the motion has failed, and no action.
Okay, thank you. We thank our planning commission, we thank you for your service, and we will continue now back into regular session of our council meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wanted to say hi to you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. It's a huge place, that one. Not a place, like a country's place.
Have y'all just been...
Look at all, look at the...
You guys all right?
Y'all want to speak to the council?
Okay, thanks, sir.
Maybe I'll be able to talk to somebody.
Okay. We're now back in session. We're now back in session. This time, on the agenda, Diane, we're gonna be opening bids for the Gwynne's Law Project. Which is a project for our citizens who are here that is funded by V-DOT. Help me out, they're licensed, they're herder maintenance, our maintenance projects, things. Okay, Ken's Construction. One more time, Mayor, please. This bid is from Cleco Construction. Cleco Construction. So, unless council, unless council changes our procedure, what we'll do is, I'll give these to Kevin and ask him to meet with Mr. Leonard, the chairman of the street committee, and hopefully, you all can have a meeting to review these bids, to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, that they meet.
Yes, sir.
That it's the same, that they're bidding in the same format, and we hopefully can take action on it at the, whatever we have a next council meeting, whether it be a continuing meeting or a major.
Yes, sir.
Is that agreeable, council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're down to public requests. Bill Akers. Is Bill out there? Lebanon last night approved it here.
He said he would be here, Mayor, I think we, pretty sure he's gonna be here at 6:30. I think we thought that was gonna go a little long.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll go to Ms. Cornette, who's with us this evening, from Feeding Southwest, Virginia. You're the local market coordinator.
Yes.
Welcome to our town council meeting.
Thank you for having us. What we have started is a program where we take a truck, and lack of a better word, it's basically referred to as a beer truck, that has the sides that roll up. And we are able to bring frozen, refrigerated, dry goods to the area for people that have the EBT food stamp card. That way, they can buy a discount. We partner with Food City to get most of our food that wholesale prices, and we basically sell it at cost where they can have their vendors available with their cargo. So if they can save $20 a month, they can take that $20 and go down to get fancy in a new shirt or to the Dollar General, like pay some boys or the kids or something. And we're looking, since it's new, we're looking for areas that come into. When we see the farmer's market and find that a good, open space out of everywhere, we can do it the same way the farmer's market is, or we can come at any other time that works for the town to offer that to the citizens.
Is it limited to income guidelines?
Yes, they have to have the EBT.
Have to have the EBT card.
We're hoping to open it up to them and credit cards, but they will not allow us to do that just yet because of the grant.
Do you have set items that you have on the truck?
There is a price list, I believe it's page three. That is the items that we have, so I think there's a page behind that one. That is our last price list that we have. We plan on giving different items each month.
Okay, and that was gonna be my next question.
We're always hoping to have maybe eggs and bread, you know, basically, you know, what you run to the store always for.
Would you be able to advertise that, like each month, to say, you know, this is when we're gonna be set up, these are the items that we're gonna have?
Yes, we can send you a flyer, and then you want a flyer, we put on the town council Facebook page instead, that knows the date and time we're gonna be there, along with the items and the prices that we're gonna have that week.
And the reason we're talking about with the farmer's market is that it allows for, you know, those two, those two things to be set up at the same time, draw more people to the farmer's market, draw more people to Lebanon. And just like this planet said, it's gonna allow them to use that EBT to where it can go further.
Do you anticipate the net, this is a, just so I know, would you anticipate this being in competition with the farmer's market?
No.
It's two different.
It's two different things. We actually went to Ohio back in Cincinnati and shadowed their program for a day, and they actually have a program that they're able to work with the farmer's market that we haven't been able to set up this year or new, but they're able to actually use benefits at those programs, at the farmer's market and the mobile markets.
Would you be able to take overflow things from the farmer's market? Should they have it? Or can you take, like, vegetables and that kind of thing?
We can take, we're gonna be taking over the farmer's market, but we do.
Now, I mean, just like if they hit overflow, like at the end of the day or something, would you be able to take it?
We can take it as a donation to the food bank or to Feeding Southwest, Virginia, but we can't put it on a mobile market. We can have it donated to...
I know, we can build up there.
We actually have a harvest kid that, that meet people are able to come get a hot meal Tuesday through Thursday. And they also have, like, produce and bakery items and stuff that stores donate to us that they can also take with us when they get the free meals.
Diane, when we...
May 1st.
May 1st, on that Saturday. We're open, still WISI's on Saturdays. Before then, if it's agreeable to everyone, it would be good if you could meet with our farmer's market director out there, Ms. Lasswell.
Does somebody have her contact?
Ms. Nunna can work it out with you.
That would be great.
So, how's council feel about, about this? So, how's council feel about, about this project for our citizens through the EBT cards? I like, I kinda do too.
And if for some reason, if she were to meet with Ms. Lassley and if she does see that as a conflict, would we be able to set her up somewhere else in town?
Or set her up at the same place, just different names?
Would that be okay? But just, just so we can move forward with this program.
Yeah, so.
We're very flexible on that even time running, because we're just starting and we've got a pretty open calendar.
Okay. Uh, how's council? Kevin, do we need to take action on that or just agree? Everyone up, you get up, Ash?
Yes, sir.
Brad?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes. I guess the question comes up about like a business license, if that's required.
It's saying it's not a profit.
It is not a profit.
Yeah, I'm not, just verify that's not required.
Yeah, it's not a, a profit, not, yeah. Mrs. Cornette, yeah, I'm with you. So, if you, there's a number, her name's Pam Lassley.
Thank you, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna look this lady up first, because I think this is, you might take a little longer. Natasha Hughes, come forward. How can you save? How can, how can we help you save?
All right, I am getting ready to open a couple businesses in the building next door, that, that I really like. And, um, I really got some big plans and big rooms with it, and it's gonna be offering services that, you know, isn't just, it don't have around here. So it isn't just gonna be your normal salon and everything, you know, there's services in there. Uh, but to do that, you know, the funding is pretty tight, or it's, you know, a lot more expensive than what you realize when you're getting going, but I need some water taps, and I was gonna see if the town would possibly waive them or help me out with those, so I can get each, you know, each level on its own tap, uh, because I've got to get, you know, the other part is underneath the commercial part, the storefront, run it out and make the tap. So that's what I'm here.
Will?
Mayor, I initially talked to Miss Hughes and told her this was in our project area, and we, we had those incentives for a downtown revitalization, but Shandon informed me that this property was not in the 15th, well, it actually stopped at the red light. So, I mean, that's, that's one thing I think the council ought to consider, is are we willing to extend it, uh, our town incentives for the downtown project, one block this way until the deadline of, of December thirty-first, with the, with the other incentives expiring at the same time. So that's something just to take into consideration.
Miss Hughes, what we'll have to do, obviously, I mean, I don't think we can give you an answer tonight, we're gonna have to discuss this because, particularly when it comes to water taps, there, you know, you give one group water taps, then we got other groups kind of want water tap business-wise. So we don't have a procedure clear yet on how we can assist you in relation to what Mr. Kimmer just said, with our downtown incentive, our business part of our project, but we need to discuss it, uh, we need to talk to Mr. Taylor, and give us some time, and this is a new request to us, so it'll take us a few, hopefully we can get back with you by the end of the week on what decision we're headed to.
Natasha, how many businesses, how many taps would you need, I mean, what, I mean, is it departments, is it for the two, multiple businesses?
Well, there's one tap there, um, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure how everything said, okay, there's one tap and it's running all of it, but there have to be two more taps.
I'm curious, what's the other two taps, are you saying the one tap that's there won't service your businesses that you do?
I, I honestly don't believe I can run it all on one tap, and it, I don't mean I don't.
Because you're having three different incentives.
Yes.
Okay.
And the businesses up there, it's gonna be a clothing boutique and a salon, and then there's gonna be two rental apartments.
So the other two?
Oh, okay, so you're gonna have two rental apartments downstairs, and that's where the two additional water taps are coming, okay, that's, yeah, that, that's, okay.
That clears it up.
Yes. And, and that makes sense, rather than having one water tap, you don't wanna, she doesn't wanna have to pay the water on those rental properties.
Well, I don't know if, I mean, through the town, if y'all even, I don't even think there'd be enough pressure to push up to me if the, you know, the house is being occupied and they have things running and I have things running as well. And, you know, I do want it, you know, I'm going into this and I'm putting a lot of money into the building, and I want, you know, to make it as valuable as possible and as, you know, each level sustained sale. Electric's going, you know, each level's on electric, on water, so.
Well, we, first of all, let me say we welcome you, your businesses, and we, we wanna help you any way we can. I just don't know how to give you a yes or no without looking into all the variables and top to our director, Public Works, what the water source is there. As you said, I agree with you, I think that one tap will serve two apartments in your business, you probably, you probably have. So.
If you might know the director of Public Works.
You really think she might?
So you're looking for one, one commercial, two residential?
Yes.
Okay, we can figure out, Mayor, what, what size tap is actually, well, that probably commercial, we, we can.
Wouldn't even be commercial, it may not be, could be residential for the other two apartments, could it?
There's two addresses at the building, I do know that, uh, so I don't, I don't, I don't really know now, Billy probably would know how that's.
I'd say he can tell you that, I must tell him.
So he said this is all on it?
And I appreciate you coming before us and asking us.
Natasha, is there two apartments now, or you have to completely construct one, are you renovating now, or are you renovating just, are you renovating both apartments?
Uh, my plan is getting the first level done, and then, uh, in a year's time, going to renovate into the bottom. So, the, the bottom level isn't something that, say, I have to have immediately, but that's just, that's, that's my plan.
It used to be one family lived in there.
That's a big old place.
Yeah, it was a fabric store upstairs. The ceiling's just like.
That's what I'm reading.
Same, same.
We need plan to open the top, right?
I'm really shit for June first, but that might be a miracle.
Okay, plan June July.
We may have things sooner.
I mean, we need to, to help you with your timeline.
Right.
That's all, I was, you know, what is your time, what are you thinking about when you would like for the top to be open, I know you probably have some.
Plan June July, I mean, I want whenever my, I'm leaving the school system, so my paycheck ends there, I want, I want to start, I want it to run tomorrow, okay, so.
You leave the career center?
Yes.
Well, why, I pretty sure she's gonna let Billy, but. She don't want them broke, man.
I got it, so make it some money immediately.
Okay, uh, do we have, uh, we can discuss, we can get up with you, we gonna have things.
All right, thank you all, thank you.
Hey Diane, if you want a break, can you see if you can find a copy of those that sent us to the downtown revitalization project area for the council? I may be able to email them to you, I'll type them out to you. Thank you.
Okay, we're now, I see the rescue squad is here, Bill? You all right?
All right. Thank you very much, we've got the board and Noel in here. With a quick presentation, and then you all ask questions.
Hey, Ben's up.
Danny start us, Will, go from there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello, Jamie.
Appreciate you guys all being here this evening to kind of hear us out. Uh, we, uh, on the present and board of the Life saving crew, as some of you may know, and, uh, we're here to, uh, request some advice, some management consultant, so to speak, from you guys. Based on what we're seeing on the next fiscal year, uh, we're concerned about, uh, you know, where we're headed, times have changed, and, uh, we're seeing some, uh, some issues that have come up, I'm not sure how much you all see numbers or whatever, but, uh, we just kind of wanna consult you all and, uh, use your wisdom and advice on how to overcome some of those obstacles that we're seeing. So, uh, we've been in, actually, this month will be sixty years since the lifesave crew formed, East Miles County Rescue Squad, and now we have the lifesave crew, and, um, we wanna keep that going, we, we feel like that, uh, that we can get some assistance from you folks, we can maintain the level of care that, uh, we've been able to provide the town of Lebanon and Russell County for the last sixty years, we wanna continue to do that. And we're seeing some, some problems ahead, and, uh, we'd like for you guys to, uh, help us out with that. I'll defer to Bill.
Okay, David's our, he's our financial consultant, uh, being with Edward Jones, I think he has some, uh, credential there, so, uh, he'll give you a business perspective.
Well, I don't know if I've got a whole lot of perspective, but, uh, but when they asked me to be on the board, one of the first things that I seen was, obviously, the financials. He got to look at things, and I said, well, there's a big hole in this bucket, I said, guys, we gotta figure out where we're gonna cut, uh, because right now, or, outflows is far exceeding their inflows, and at the time, we hadn't really got into the credit line all that much, but as, as time kept rolling, the snowball kept getting bigger, going downhill. That's when I kind of hit the panic button, I said, well, we gotta talk to somebody, you know, before this gets too big. So we had several meetings and we thought about it, and one of the biggest things for me was trying to figure out where to cut, and when they put it into perspective, they was like, okay, Dave, show me which shift we cut, show me where we cut. And at that point, that's when I, you know, got way up in the panic button and said, I can't tell you, I don't know when I'm gonna have a heart attack or anybody else does, so I don't know if we do think that change or cut during the day, or we do it at night. But realistically, it's, you know, our outflows are, are more than our inflows, and we just need ideas and suggestions and help, that's pretty much where, where that is. I guess you guys have all seen the, the financials or what have you.
Have you seen them? Have you seen them to the right, have y'all seen them? I don't believe we've seen them.
Yeah, we'll get those to you.
That's gonna be that, that's, that's.
I've personally seen them, Mayor, but, but not as the council, as myself. And I talked to David a little bit beforehand, and I told him that, that I had requested from Mr. Akers some financials, I think they got with Steve Short, and, uh, he got me some financials, uh, but as far as, that was for me personally, just in case the council, you know, decided a different way, but, um. The biggest thing, the biggest thing right now is suggestions, we're looking for suggestions.
Yeah, I understand it, and, and, I mean, it's a, it is tough that, for sure, and it's been tough for living, for your economy, and, uh.
Well.
And we're doing, things are, we're holding around, and things are good, but as you said, when you, when it comes down to bottom line, you got expenses, you got revenue, correct?
And you're in a situation, from what I heard a week or so ago, that your expenses are above your revenue, maybe, I don't know how significant, but I was,
I was led to believe it was significant.
Well, we've, we've got a new shared responsibility as a board to present things when I feel like they're getting out of hand, so that's kind of where we are. We can't provide those, that information for you folks.
Well, I'm trying to look at the, I'm looking at this board, there's a lot of businessmen here, I see, uh, several of you. And really, when you get down, it's, it's tough, kind of particularly the service that you're offered, as you just said, we don't know when we're gonna get sick, anytime during twenty-four hours, but on the other side of that coin, you know, at the end of the day, realistically, the only place you're gonna make substantial, uh, improvements, major, is when it comes to personnel costs. I mean, that, that's the bottom line. You may have to, you know, you may find, you may find yourself a situation where you have to adjust what you're paying people, I don't know the answer to that. You've got, you're a finance man yourself, you know, you got a lot of business heads here, but until we actually, we need a copy of the, we're, you know, we're gonna have to have a copy of financials to, before I think we could realistically make some positive, uh, recommendations to him. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, is that correct, council, mostly good?
No, I agree, just like I said, I asked for those financials, you know, more or less personally than, than for the council, but I'm pretty sure that the council hasn't seen those financials. And as far as an obligation goes, what's, what is the, have you approached the county? I guess what, I guess what I'm saying, the county, that's their responsibility, and David can help anyway, but they're responsible for providing emergency services. And I was just kind of wondering, did you reach out to them? We, we wanted to reach out to the town limit first, that was my main priority, is to try to keep it in the town. The county has a lot of handles, a lot of different things, and I felt like the service that, I mean, the service I was most concerned about was, wasn't that was closest to my house, to be honest.
Okay, you understand.
Are all the other rescue squads that the county has on April Cleveland, are they having, or do you have?
I really don't know, but they, they have a little bit more, I think, help from the volunteer side of things, but, uh, I think that's probably more of a bill.
So your volunteer numbers have grown?
Yeah, we still got some, but we, uh, it's hard to, um, get a, uh, when you run as many calls as, like, Levin Last Rescue Crew does, which is on average fourteen, fifteen hundred a year, uh, that's, it's hard to keep volunteer staff manning that twenty-four seven. Now, uh, Cleveland and Dant are still all volunteer, um, but their numbers are dwindling too, especially Dance on Last Leg. But they run a third, well, shoot, a fifth, a fifth of that, and it's like, um, it's, that's basically it, it's, it's a lot less time consuming and labor.
And sick labor, yeah.
Right, so, uh, so thank goodness for that for them. Uh, but I was at a meeting in Richmond, uh, just last week, and talked to some of my county reports from rural Virginia, and they, you know, and I asked them how, we're all the same though, it's like, if you are a small town, uh, rural area, then the story's the same, it's the name of the town change.
You're right.
And, uh, I think I talked to you, as I told you, we met last week, uh, you know, rich lands, casual, blue field, wiffle, Marion, they all.
Spreading the same thing.
You know, it's, it's not just another thing, it's just, if you're about our size, this is what you go for.
Right.
So, so that's where we are, and we, we're coming to the town council first, because, first of all, I'm a citizen of Lebanon, and, um, have been, uh, I know to take care of the people of Lebanon, then you all, that's, that's what you, what you did, that's why you're elected, that's why you're here. And having dealt with the county, and I was the captain of the lifesaving crew for years and all that stuff, but, um, the, the county, they will split it in five ways, because there's five rescue squads. It doesn't matter if one agency might run three hundred calls a year, and the other one runs fifteen hundred calls a year, it doesn't matter.
They get same.
It's five, unless they change that, excuse me, I apologize. Until that changes, you know, it's, it's gonna be you all that have to have our backs to protect the citizens of Lebanon, because it just, it doesn't, that map. to protect the citizens of Lebanon, because it just, it doesn't, that map that they use doesn't work.
True.
So, um, in short, I'll just finish that. First of all, if, this is a convenient time for y'all to take a break here in a few minutes. We brought the new ambulance that you all helped us buy last year. It's out front, that y'all can look in some of all of the advanced equipment we've been able to get here lately. But just in short, as Jamie said, um, you know, this is the sixtieth anniversary of it for sixty years. If you've needed help, rescue, ambulance, twenty-four seven, seven days a week, for sixty years, we've been here. And now, and our motto has always been, "Help us, help you." Um, so that's, we're coming to underscore that. Help us, we help you. That's, uh, the call is. We've done so much for the town over sixty years. Now, we just need, I don't know how much money, if, if financially, we're gonna need anything at all. If you look at our financials and say, "Well, here's a fix," and if you have our backs while we implement that fix, uh, it might end up that we don't do anything. You know, it may not be a thing. Um, but we're at a point where we can't experiment. We've gotten, we've been working on this for five, six, seven years now, and we're to the point where experimentation is not an option. We can try stuff, but somebody's gotta have our back while we're here.
Can you get that copy, can you get, like, Mr. Bartlett, the financials?
Oh, yes.
Mayor, I have, I have emailed a copy of everything that Elijah and myself got from Steve Short. I just emailed that to every member of the council.
Sure, and anything else you need, we are wide open.
Everybody's now got a copy of it.
Anything you want, need, size of my underwear, you know, would it?
I do have a, just a quick question, and I don't want to dive into these financials until the rest of the councils have time to look at it and ask questions, and then us, you know, kind of get our, wrap our heads around the situation here. But, um, I got some numbers from you today. Uh, it looks like in two thousand nineteen, you ordered fourteen hundred and thirty-nine calls, but thousand and sixty were approved.
Mm-hmm.
So seventy-four percent of the calls were approved in two thousand nineteen. Uh, a couple others that I've, you know, that, just like I said, I can get deeper, I just don't want to. In two thousand twenty, uh, you did fifteen hundred and thirteen calls, nine hundred and ninety, nine hundred and ninety-nine were approved, is sixty-six percent. Is that a, is that approval rating, is that a trend that you've seen over the last five and seven years?
Mm-hmm. And when you say approved, what it is with E and S, I, I know y'all, your timing's bad a little bit, but the, the structure of healthcare for, for ambulance response is they only pay if you're put in the back of the truck and they take you somewhere. We go to somebody's house and help them out of bed, or out of the floor at three o'clock in the morning and get them back in bed, that's not billable. If we go, uh, stand by for the fire department, which you have a great fire department, y'all don't know it, you are blessed with your fire department. Uh, and we go and stand by with them, unless we haul a patient somewhere, that's not billable. So much of what we do is not billable. And, uh, then if we do, when we do haul people, um, and haul is kind of a rude word, but when we transport people and provide them medical care, um, so many of them either have no insurance or Medicaid. Medicaid is about seventy-five dollars a haul, or, or, you know, a patient. And so it's, um, it's just not, when you are caring for a poor and indigent population, you're not, so, then that's, that's what we do. We care for the poor.
Okay, Bill, thank you very much.
All right.
We'll, we'll be getting with you.
We'd like to stay around, you have a break, and you can...
I can get a break, if you'd like.
Sir?
I can get a break, take a break.
All right, we'll be outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beyond E and S and public, okay. This time, I'm gonna call it ten-minute break. May and the new business is, uh, spring cleaning event discussion, which we did here a few years ago. Uh, Kevin, just talk to me a little bit about this. What we did, I'm trying to think, the end of you were here, I'm looking, Scott was here, Gole was. Basically, what we did, we visited two weeks in April, I believe, is what we're looking at, and to encourage you that we call it Lebanon Spring Cleaning. For our citizens, uh, it gives them the opportunity to bring everything to the edge of their property, they will hopefully clean up their property. And we run the, uh, our box truck, our bulk truck, and we schedule it. They bring it to the edge of the property, we come get it within those, uh, I think they have to call in here, is that where at work, Kevin? They call the office, front office, or coordinate through Billy, uh, as long as we're good with the guys who are operating it, we don't have a major, like, we have something tear up, water lines, sewer plant, major breakdown, but, uh, you know, I kind of think it's a, it's a good thing for our citizens, it's a good thing, you know, this council, we're working hard to clean up our town, keep it looking, uh, pleasant and pretty through our communities, and, uh, some of our citizens have asked us if that's possible, so, I'll fill it out.
And we need to advertise it because a lot of people do a lot more if they know this is happening.
Yeah. So, this is, if we want to do this, we could put it on our webpage and Facebook, Diane. I mean, if we started Monday, that gives us two full weeks in the month of April, starting Monday, the nineteenth, and ended on Friday, the thirtieth. If we could put a size of this, the end of stuff, that note on our Facebook and webpage, and we'll get the Lebanon News to run an article that week of the nineteenth. If you all agree with that, I'd like to proceed forward. Okay, y'all good? Am I good with this plan?
Yes, but...
I had a citizen request that kind of goes along with this. Um, it was what we would call a, like a shredding event, and I don't know if the town has a shredding service that we use, um, and I don't know if it's even possible. It would be, but to wear...
We had a paper truck.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I've seen it in town.
And, and shred on the spot.
Yep. They do that.
I mean, we're talking to many offices, by the way, yeah.
So, I mean, they're kind of different businesses, and they pay for that.
They pay for it, but...
Like, uh, dial, and they serve there about every few days, they pay for it.
What I, what, what they were asking was a once-a-year, um, kind of thing, just like this. It could be in conjunction, you know, something with a cleanup event, you know, cleaning up and cleaning out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where they would bring their papers, you know, to be, to be shredded. And I don't even know if there would be a thing, I mean, I, I've, I've seen those events, um, on other towns where it's all...
I don't think, we're not gonna charge the people to speak to it.
Right, right. I'm talking about the shredding of the paper.
The county does something like paint and different, uh, like, is that once-a-year time, maybe it could be done with that time?
Yeah, Brian Ferguson organizes that for the county, he does it once a year, and it's coming up by next two weeks, so it's all paper, paint, they get a truck, ten thousand pound, uh, shred truck there, and they shred all day for anybody in county, town, or county residents.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. It's, it should be next two weeks, shouldn't it be either in the April first or May?
Well, hey, good, it could be going on the time, same time we're doing our event.
Even advertising Lebanon News, I'm not sure what the date is on, I know it's in there in this two or three weeks.
Well...
Can we find out and maybe advertise that on our town page?
To help coordinate with the county and that, yeah?
To make sure that the, that, that information gets out.
I think they actually, they actually, uh, accept car tires, not commercial, from commercial businesses, but from residents. So, there, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big event going on.
Computers, I mean, just all kinds of, and paint, things that you can't put in your trash.
Kevin, maybe give a Brian Ferguson... That's what I was gonna, could you give a Brian on these, this could be what we're planning to do the next, the week, starting the ninth day?
Here's the information, Mayor, the two thousand twenty-one Household Hazardous Waste Shredder Files and Free Tire Drop Off Event will be on Wednesday, April twenty-first, from ten AM to two PM at the Russell County Government Office Park.
That's right, within two weeks, that's perfect.
And that's on their...
Uh, that's on the Russell County Board of Supervisors' Facebook page.
Can we, it'd be all right to put that on ours, too? With the, the note?
And that's, yeah, make sure, okay.
Sounds like a good idea, Mayor. Okay, anything else on that matter? Let's see, I and B, street banners, the standard?
Yes, so, um, first, first is ideas for, we had discussed on, we had discussed at our last county meeting, just to do banners for the Fourth of July, but then in talking more about it, um, you said that it's covered with downtown revitalization money, uh, maybe going ahead and getting, uh, banners for all year.
Seasonal.
Seasonal banner. So, I came up with several ideas. Uh, this first one is Cedar Fest, no year on it, so we could use it year to year. Um, so I want to, this is the first page, I want to pass these to you all, see if there's any that you'd like. From there, we came up, or getting three quotes from, um, local people that, where we worked last time, it wasn't a very good experience, but called Jerry Signs in Abingdon, called, um, Fast Signs in Johnson City, um, to get a quote, and then write a contact...
Pro Image Graphics.
Image Graphics, and, uh, it's, wrote...
Pro Image Graphics out of, uh, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Daryl Stoops doesn't do the banners to get a quote from you?
He does not do front and back. Hmm-mm. But...
Pass those down, I mean, you, I'm gonna get them all soon.
What we, um, we have thirty-nine holes, not all of those are dull, some of them are single, but what we're gonna do is get the, um, get them with the windflaps, so they can be, they can see the winds on Main Street. Um, both of the places that I called, and I'm not sure about, um, Pro Image Graphics, is they require a deposit. Johnson City requires half-down, um, and he said that's just really not because he doesn't trust, you know, the town or anything, but because of businesses that they've worked with in the past, it works better to do half-down. Um, but they are gonna be the same quality that we've already gotten, uh, all of the places, we would work with a graphic designer, um, making sure the banners would look nice.
No, you know, we're gonna pick out what you want. I love what you want, man. My first three, well...
Speaking of banners, did we, did we disperse the, the thin blue line and red line of the fire department, please? Can I get a second, can somebody clarify that? Did you all get any of those banners?
Yeah.
The, the ones that were...
The ones that were wrong?
Wrong. They should have been...
I saw one of them, it was a nice vehicle, yeah, on a Jeep.
That's a decal.
No, that, you're talking about, uh, that's the district, in the grill with that Jeep, that's just aftermarket PC fault.
Okay, I thought we gave, did we not give you the banners to give to your guys?
We...
We've not seen, no, sir.
Where are they?
I don't know, they need...
Well, I mean, we're just gonna make sure, we just say care.
You make a lot of make sure...
Since I got the police chief here, let's say the fire chief here, it's just easy to do.
Uh, are we doing these just like the four seasons, spring, summer, fall, winter?
Whatever we have money to do.
Okay, so...
Four seasons.
Whatever you all wanted it.
And not just like four, with them all day and that kind of money?
I just, yeah, I just gave some ideas of things that you did.
The Cedar Fest is, that's...
Just get Kevin, we'll kind of get it, you know, right? Just let us know, the, and we'll show up, and we'll...
Mary?
Yes, sir.
Can we, let them know we appreciate you. Affirm this to Parks and Rec Committee?
That's fine, we, yeah.
And have, let's have a set for everybody?
Okay.
And we'll meet and decide what we can do, because we gotta do this pretty soon.
Yep, okay, so...
When do you think we get the Cedar Fest, July fourth? How much time do we need?
Um, now, Jerry Signs, they were seventy-five dollars each, he said he could get them done with. This, um, the one in Johnson City, I think if, you know, if, within a couple weeks, it'd be in April, uh, be by...
They'd take their time to put the town logo in the corner.
By May, we can't, we can't put the town logo with...
Just somewhere else.
Didn't say the end, the opposite of the group?
Pro Image Graphics, which you made our signs for.
Can they do it front and back?
When we get ready to link to the...
Take them, yeah.
I'd say six weeks would be enough, as long as we have the banners, time to work with graphic designers.
Kevin Chain, that said that these were covered in the downtown revitalization street code funds. Can you make sure of that, see if my banners in your meeting on, uh, April fourth?
We're meeting, we're meeting Wednesday, so I can bring that up, but I'll, I'll touch base with Chain.
So, we need to have a Parks and Rec meeting within a week, to where we can decide on the company we want to go with, how many banners, Diane, that we will actually need, um, and then the, what banners we want to have.
Diane, can you copy these and color like this?
Yeah, she did it, please. You don't...
Yeah, I want to get the whole set. I want the whole...
Okay, I'll just, I'll, let me take... And they don't have to have...
You got somewhere here, man. You got somewhere here.
I just want to get a set of them, now, we're gonna like...
See, can you give everybody a set of what, I'll come with. She, I mean, she has them all.
Oh, she's got it?
Yeah.
Do you keep that set, Diane? Would you make us another set, everybody, please?
And then we'll have to just set a Parks and, Parks and Rec meeting.
Parks and Rec, I'm not gonna be honest with you.
I mean, next week, did I?
It has to be there.
I have to wait and let you know tomorrow, my husband's, I'll do it.
Oh, okay. But what can you tell us when you need to?
Well, how about, do you want to do it next week?
Yeah, we will, we'll try to, uh, the point of saying...
Oh, okay, okay.
You got, you got a focus point.
We do that in conjunction with the finance committee, any of y'all, so, Mayor? I'd like to take one day off work and sit there.
Yeah?
We do finance early and...
There's two things that I'd like to consider. Can we, is, first of all, is four-thirty the earliest that we can all meet?
Okay.
Any? I mean, we can usually work around, if you work weekends.
Yeah.
Scott, are you still, usually Wednesday or Thursday off?
Never rather.
What's next week look like, do you?
Giving shots every day. Many times, sir. Day is my day. I'm off next week, so...
Right, and if we can, let's avoid Wednesday night, again, uh, do the church services at seven.
So, next Thursday, Scott, did you say you're off?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Next Thursday is the twenty-second, is that right?
It is.
So, next Thursday, the twenty-second, that is, Deanna, plenty time, I don't take on that department, not this Thursday to the next Thursday.
We could even do it, to schedule it next week, and if something happens, I can't find your office.
Well, no.
Do you ever, no?
No, you're chairman of the committee.
I mean, I don't know what you'll be doing.
Well, we're just, let, let's say that, and then you remind us what's gonna be.
Thursday, April, twenty-second.
At the...
At four-thirty.
Parks and Rec and Budget Committee meeting.
April what, noon?
Twenty-second.
At ten?
Four-thirty.
I'm, I'm unavailable for twenty-second, and I need to double check that time, man.
Mary, can we...
But I'm fine with the, the, I'm fine with the Parks and Rec.
No, no, we're gonna have budget, we're gonna have one committee meeting.
Well, I was planning on calling the budget meeting two weeks from tonight, but now I have to bring the visit there.
Are you, does that mean you're off the twenty-sixth?
Yes, that day.
Well, how about Monday the twenty-sixth, Brad?
Because you have baseball.
I'm unavailable that evening, not so. One of the active boardies, that's a fun, if you'll put the rest in office, let's run that.
Let, let me do it this way.
Or Friday, tell us.
Brad.
Council meeting the third.
Brad. Tell us when you can leave in the next two weeks.
Next, next week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Alright.
The following week, Wednesday, Friday.
Scott.
So you're not off any Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Off like, um.
No, were you coming here four-thirty?
I had baseball start at six, and I don't believe that they are.
Uh, yeah, finance, I mean, that, we're in mid, middle of budget season, so that's, uh, that's not a big quickie.
No, that's fine.
I actually plan on for the budget meetings, having the time, and just getting as far as we can, calling it, calling it over with and then moving on.
That's what I thought I'd do.
How many, did you get available?
The nineteenth.
Next Monday?
Yes, sir.
I'm unavailable.
And Scott's unavailable, I think.
But meeting on the nineteenth for Parks and Rec, so we can go ahead and get these banners.
We could do that.
Sounds good to me.
You okay with that, Scott?
Yep, what's that?
The nineteenth of Parks and Rec?
He has to work.
No problem.
We can call you.
I'm good with what Mr. Stanley, Diane wants.
But she won't be there. He won't be there.
He's, he said he, you.
He says whatever you want, Diane.
Probably we need the.
Yeah, but we need to know how much money is available, yeah, we need to know how much money is available.
We'll know when it's, you know, parks meeting. So nineteenth at four-thirty, Parks and Rec. Yeah, Brad, you got the Lily Masters schedule, you seen it, Diane?
For our field or the, all of them?
For my daughter, Paul, and his.
And then, Deanna, with those, we can put riding on, we don't have to put riding on, we can just put welcome on them, we don't have to.
Put welcome, we don't have to do that, just the pictures.
We can just do pictures.
That's right.
We don't have to do any, I just put some, I just put some riding on, others some without riding.
Yeah, I like them all, thank you so much.
Okay, so therefore then, I'm sorry.
Mix that in.
Well, the budget meeting, is either, is gonna have to be a Wednesday or Friday. Listen, they don't have schedules, that's correct.
Brad, you have, you're unavailable next Monday to twenty-sixth.
I am available.
I work every Friday.
Saturday evenings.
Yep, Saturday it is.
Well, you're found that next issue.
Yeah.
What time is it, Parks and Rec, four-thirty? Okay. If you want to meet on the budget on Saturday morning.
Not here, hmm? I work every other Saturday.
Um. You play golf on Saturdays too?
Yeah, I'll be in rugby on Saturday morning.
Let's shoot it for two weeks on that Monday, and this.
Is it, that's your practice or a date?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that a game or practice on the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, I'm teaching a CPR class.
Are you the one that sits at class?
What are you talking to? I'm already done everything, recorded and paperwork filled out for it.
Well, this is like a family picnic, you have to say that, Erica could.
So, as a good point, can the finance committee meet?
On the twenty-sixth.
Is that?
It's me doing, Brad, I mean, me doing, Scott.
And if I can't do your Espada, I'll catch up.
That's what I'm saying about what I have today.
So we'll have a finance committee, Bill, Scott, and Nia on the twenty-sixth, I can see.
And anybody else that wants to.
Anybody else that can make it, if I'm good with that one.
At what time, four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
I'm gonna check my schedule.
June twenty-fifth.
Between six?
Well, it's all nice though.
Cleaning up Monday, is that? What's going on there? Monday, Monday, Monday.
We'll probably need a six-thirty timing, just. You have a, right, see how much we can get done in two hours.
What time do you want to start that?
Four-thirty.
I mean, what about, can you do earlier?
Yeah, I can do earlier.
Bill?
Anytime.
What, what?
Just stay in the time, I don't know, I, just as long as I got a heads up, I can, I can do my own thing, I just need that. You'll do two-thirty, three o'clock, I'm good with that, I'm just trying not to be in here taped, okay?
Three o'clock works?
Three. Change, Diane.
Okay.
It's gonna be at three, it's gonna be at three o'clock.
In the Parks and Rec, the nineteenth at four-thirty?
Four-third.
I've got a hundred dollars at some time.
What time does your CPR class, does that help you make it to the little old man, Brad?
I think it starts at six.
Well, you've come for this a little while.
Yeah, if you do the three, I'm with it.
Yeah, did Mary come with it?
I can move around.
There you go. Are you good, Diane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, uh, Kim.
Yes, sir.
I think we're done, do you, Diane?
I've just got one item.
Okay.
This is the COVID policy I met with the supervisors, uh, because there's some departments that may have some differences based on, you know, uh, the departments in regards to how they might function if the pandemic was to take place again. So really, the only thing that you, uh, haven't seen prior to, who you never looked at and you got your package, everything's the same except the contingency plan.
What phase would that be in?
Uh, go all the way back to the end behind information.
Oh, with her.
No, I'm about in, in the policy, where's that contingency?
It's towards the back as well.
Page thirteen.
Page thirteen.
Yeah.
So this is, as a result, this is versa?
Yeah.
Under the direction of governor's office?
Yeah, so if you remember what we did last year, uh, versa gave us a temporary policy that you guys had approved.
Yes.
And at the beginning of the year, January, I think it was the twenty-first, twenty-second, something like that, uh, there was a permanent, uh, policy that came out, and then, of course, we adopted versa, and, uh, basically, the biggest thing was that change to make it more permanent is just to describe the contingency plan, and, uh, what I did was, uh, consulted with Eddie Shelton and had him to look at this, and of course, you can see on the right, that was some of his notes that he put, uh, after he would have looked at everything. So what he did then is, I mean, what I did is I went and edited based on what he commented on, and then I sent him, uh, a copy to look at, the final draft, and he's good, he said it's good together, so, uh, that we need for you guys to adopt it.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt versa COVID nineteen infectious disease prevention plan.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Sir, sir. Can you throw the discussion, all those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, anything else, Kevin, Diane?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Chief of Police, do you have, uh, go ahead.
Just, uh, I just ran through the numbers for you real quick. Uh, for the month of March, through the police department patrol, a total of eleven thousand one hundred twenty-nine miles. We, um, responded to a total of three hundred and seventy-three total calls for service, assisted twenty-five motorists, um, twenty-eight total arrests, and issued sixty-one total summonses, uh, for the month there. So, um, with, uh, obviously, Chris Snead, or CIT coordinator, he, um, he took in seven total CIT cases for the month, and, uh, he assisted us on six total calls for service throughout the month to kind of help, alleviate a little bit of overtime for, for some officers there. Basically, that was the, just the numbers in there. There's one thing, we talked to, the, the insurance adjuster had come down and looked at the, uh, the Explorer, and, and the numbers we're giving Mr. Blakenship relayed does to me, that it was, I think, nineteen thousand was the total number that they're gonna give us for the Explorer that was wrecked. I do have, I have got with the state bid, and they do have leftover twenty-twenty Explorers, which are identical to the ones that we just purchased, that she, Ford, is willing to knock a little bit off for us, but it's still gonna put us, um, total vehicle price for that is about thirty-four thousand seven hundred. I can take it, there's a few things out of that Explorer we can use to put on a new one, but new body style, a lot of the stuff in that, the cage, the consoles, the push bumper, the light bar, all the D ticket items don't match up to the new body style. I'm working on a company that might be able to get brackets for the cage, so we don't, maybe I'll have to buy a cage. Uh, but, a, a pretty good estimate for additional footprint will be about three thousand, which would leave us somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars if we were to move forward with a new vehicle and that stuff.
Are you clear on the best asset recovery funds?
Some of that has been, uh, some of that is still just waiting from the forms from DCJS to be sent back on what we can't get. A lot of that's just, uh, still in limbo with the, the dispositions from court and everything.
What, what do you have now? How much you got now?
On the total asset forfeiture, uh, I have no idea. Um, we had six thousand that was available, and a lot of that was used for the other two cruisers, so I would say somewhere around a couple of thousand at most, uh, that we'd be, that we would have right now.
I think we're gonna use some of that funds to remark those other cruisers to match the new units, but.
Yeah.
Obviously, if we're trying to replace a cruiser with I and B. I do have a question on, uh, on that insurance settlement, uh, for the, for the items that we can use off of that car, uh, whether it be, you know, grille lights, strobe lights here and there, for what we do take off of that cruiser, are we gonna be penalized in that settlement?
They told us that, that nineteen thousand what would give us, and what the guy that did the estimate told me was, once that was done, that anything we could take off could use with the use, is that the way he related it?
Yes.
That's the way he related it.
If that's the case, here's my suggestion, we've got plenty two thousand fourteen model Explorers that all that stuff fits on. Probably wouldn't hurt to take.
Go ahead, tell you.
I just wanna clarify that we're not gonna be penalized, cause we've got a, we've got to work off of that nineteen thousand number to make a decision.
Yes.
Um, with any of that equipment that's, you know, that's accessible.
Yeah.
And I, I would.
I, I'll make another phone call, I'll make sure, but what he told me.
Light bar, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly, what he told me was that, once they made their number, any of the auxiliary lighting and stuff that we could take off, just go ahead and get it off.
Yeah, we received an email from the insurance, and, uh, they said that no problem, that we could strip out whatever we needed from the car. So maybe we got that email.
Okay, good.
It's on record.
Yeah, it's a record.
And, um, just one other thing, I know the council was made aware of an incident, uh, with the fire department, and there was a letter sent out, um.
Uh, we're not gonna talk about that.
Well, I was gonna ask if I could meet with you guys in closed session to discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably all of it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else right now?
No, sir.
Mr. Taylor.
I have a couple things to talk about in closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Now, any committee reports that have, that we need to talk about now?
You gonna talk about it now, or after, I, I just have one, um, on Chris Pritz's wastewater plant, if you all see under his recommendations. He is recommending that our current internet provider, uh, contract with Chantel expired in February. Right now, we are using Chantel and Point broadband, we're using Point broadband especially out of the water plant, just because, um, the service that is needed to do that telemetry, um, Chantel does not carry that. His suggestion, because both the water and wastewater are both using that telemetry, that if we can just move over to Point broadband as a town, you know, and that way, we're only paying one internet provider rather than having two bills.
Right.
So that is, you know, my.
Is the contract with Chantel up?
Mm-hmm.
What about the cost to pay?
We, we, we would have to check on that, we've not actually, uh, reached out to Point broadband, uh, broadband, to find out what that cost is. We would have to, uh, get some numbers from them, it'd be something that you guys may want to look at, or maybe.
Compare it for them.
Compare, yeah, to be it.
But, I, I don't think Chantel even offers.
Yeah, that's, that's the next thing, is we gotta make sure that they actually have the service that we need for our telemetry.
I, I don't think Chantel.
I think the community center has Point broadband.
Yeah, they do direct, direct San Diego.
So, so my suggestion is that we move to one.
Okay.
Internet provider for the whole, for all the town.
For everything.
For everything.
I, I could do that.
And, and making sure that, that one company covers all of our needs.
Okay.
Ray, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Lodge?
Um, I've got that highlight to talk about, I appreciate you touching on that, Mayor. Uh, I do have a couple of things here, um, water treatment, we're at thirty-two percent loss rate, I know we're working on some leaks. Uh, we sold fifty-four percent and stored eight percent. That's gotta be some things that we talk about when we go back into rates, um, I did start looking at some sanitation numbers, though, and I, Kevin's gonna work with me on some of those, and, uh, Cindy, um, street side, uh, just to give y'all an update, during the committee for streets, we talked about Platter Buck and those budget numbers. Um, I think we're gonna move forward with that, police cruiser, uh, the chief hit on that, four-inch water line out here at the, uh, out here at the new bathrooms, Kevin?
Yes.
Make sure that is put toward cares, even though that may be obsolete. Just in case we can backdate and pay with these new funds, make sure that that gets put on there. Also, the concrete project around that bathroom, because that's a COVID bathroom, make sure that also gets put on cares funds if you don't.
Okay.
Other than that, Mayor, I believe I'm good.
Diane, can you say that? Bill?
No.
Scott?
Mayor, can I move down under, uh, the personnel, the personnel finance together after executive session?
During executive session?
After executive session.
Oh, ever? Yes.
And I have something in executive session too.
Okay. Okey-doke, will ya? Uh, do I have a motion to go into closed session for personnel and legal?
Actually, Mayor, Darrell, do you wanna, do you have anything for us? We appreciate you coming. I might get motion, Mayor.
Second.
Personnel legal.
Correct.
Anything else, Mayor?
Anything to go for? Yeah, somebody did that section, please. Two point two, nine, three, seven, one, one, eight, one, seven.
And you need to kill.
Personnel.
And personnel.
Yeah, as much as possible.
Can. Well, mine is for, you just discuss, um, the, um, pool and the recreational personnel.
Seasonal workers and. Seasonal workers and start on hiring, that's it, illegal.
Of pending litigation.
Pending litigation.
Can we also talk about the respected business?
That'd be number five.
I'd rather just close number four, I should.
Well, I guess so. Privacy of individuals?
Yep.
We're not gonna purchase any property.
The bank's not open?
Not yet.
Okay, you got all that, Diane? Okay, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pro same side.